We'll call to order the meeting of the Fort Mill Town Council for June the 13th. I'm glad it's not a Friday. And call to order if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor McHale?
Father, we thank you for another beautiful day that you've given us to live. But thank you for every blessing that you've bestowed upon us. We pray to give us wisdom tonight to conduct the town's business and we give it all in your holy name we pray. Amen.
If you would remain standing for just one minute in remembrance of all those that lost their lives in Orlando. Thank you. If you'll be seated, please. First, thank you all for coming. I am terribly sorry for those of you that don't have chairs to sit in. We can only accommodate so many and I hope that in the future we'll be able to do a better job of opening up some space and having a place for everyone to rest comfortably. As is the practice I've had since January of this year, I always like to add something interesting on the front end. And tonight, I thought a quote from Harper Lee from To Kill a Mockingbird would be interesting. "You never really understand a person until you consider things from his point of view." Tonight, I feel certain that all of you are here to present a point of view that we need to hear. So I will be asking you to follow a few housekeeping rules. First, yes, Al, I do pay attention. If you would silence your cell phones. We don't want any disruptions. We do get good ideas now and then, don't we? I think it's also important to recognize this is a business meeting. We work to effectively provide you an opportunity for public comment and input in an orderly and courteous manner. Anyone that wants to speak must sign in. You will be required to provide your address at the podium and clearly state your name. You'll be speaking to the council, not to the audience. If anyone is represented by a group here tonight, because we do have a full house and we would like to give everyone the opportunity to speak, if you have a spokesperson for your group, that would certainly help. We will keep our business meeting professional and ask that you refrain from clapping or speaking out of order. That's not to say you have to push your passion off to the side, but it is to say that everyone deserves an opportunity to speak and an opportunity to be heard. So with that, thank you and we appreciate your interest in being here tonight. This is not the only item on the agenda, so we will have other issues that will be of equal importance. And with that, council members, you've had an opportunity to view your town council meetings for 5:23, 2016, and the town council meeting minutes for 6:00, 7:00, 2016. Do we have any corrections, deletions, or changes?
Can I move for approval?
Thank you, Mr. Huntley. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. All right, and with that, we have approved the minutes for the past two meetings. Presentation. Presentation number one, the appointment of Associate Municipal Judge Trevor Threet.
Anyone who's here for Trevor Threet swearing in, if you all can just step in, if we could just make room for the mayor and see my counsel.
Yeah, Trevor Judge.
And I think his beautiful mother was going to hold the Bible up here.
Please, by all means. It's nice to meet you. Do we have room for all family and people here to help Mr. Threet become a member in standing here? All right, I can't see without glasses. You rose to the office. Repeat after me, please. I, Trevor Threet.
I, Trevor Threet.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of this office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge those duties.
Discharge those duties.
And will preserve, protect, and defend.
And will protect, preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As municipal judge.
As municipal judge.
Of the town of Fort Mill.
Of the town of Fort Mill.
I pledge to uphold.
I pledge to uphold.
The integrity and independence.
The integrity and independence.
Of the judiciary.
Of the judiciary.
I pledge in the discharge of my duties.
I pledge in the discharge of my duties.
To treat all persons.
To treat all persons.
Who enter the courtroom.
Who enter the courtroom.
With civility.
With civility.
Fairness.
Fairness.
And respect.
And respect.
I pledge to listen courteously.
I pledge to listen courteously.
Sit impartially.
Sit impartially.
Act promptly.
Act promptly.
And rule after careful.
And rule after careful.
And considerate deliberation.
And considerate deliberation.
I pledge to seek justice.
I pledge to seek justice.
And justice alone.
And justice alone.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome. We appreciate it. All right, presentation number two with the May financials, Shante Bowler, our finance director. Good evening, Shante.
Good evening, Mayor. And the council. We come tonight to bring you a snapshot of the financials for the month of May. Our target is 67 percent, which is eight months into the fiscal year. Our general fund revenues are at 77 percent of collections. Our property taxes through the month of April have exceeded the budget by 104 percent, or at budget, or at 104 percent of the budget, let me get that right. Our building permits are at 81 percent of budget. Our planning zoning fees are at 101 percent of budget. And our spring festival revenue, that's for the strawberry festival, is at 112 percent of the budget. Our general fund expenditures, all departments are at or below the 67 percent threshold. The gross revenue revenues are at 29 percent. The gross revenue expenditures, all departments are below the 67 percent threshold. For our stormwater utility fund, the revenue is at 59 percent of collections. The stormwater expenditures are at 14 percent. For our capital projects fund, revenues are at 189 percent of collections, and that's primarily due to the transfer that we made last month. Without the transfer, the revenues are at 14 percent. Our hospitality tax is tracking well. It's at 71 percent through April reporting. Our capital projects expenditures are at 15 percent. To update you on our other funds, our local accommodations tax, we've collected $61,095. For our fire protection impact fees, we've collected $112,406. For municipal facilities, we've collected $184,177. And for recreation, we've collected $499,988, which gives us a total collections through May 31st for impact fees of $796,571. Some additional information that I'd like to share with you tonight is that we have been notified by the city of Rock Hill per our water contract of a rate increase that will occur in next month's cycle, starting July 1. The rate increase will be at 12.5 percent of our water rates. So we are preparing to implement that increase in our next month's cycle. We're preparing a bill stuffer to go out with this month's bill statement that will be processed towards the end of the month to inform our customers. Our wholesalers have been notified as well of the increase. And just to share, in comparison, currently on 6,000 gallons of water, a inside-city customer would pay $30.77. With the new rate increase, it would be $33.51, which is a difference of $2.74 on a monthly bill. And that's for water only. Also, I'd like to share that we have expanded our credit card payment options to our customers. As of last week, we've added American Express and Discover to our offerings. And lastly, I'd like to just make you aware that we have commenced the budget process and the supervisors are just so excited about that.
We are sure.
They're hard at work identifying the needs for our next budget year. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Shante. Certainly appreciate the thoroughness with which you do your work. All right, now we will be moving into the public hearing portion of our meeting. I feel it necessary to cover a little bit of a timeline, so that those of you that are here, because of what you've read or seen on the computer or in the press, and perhaps have not attended the planning commission meeting, you'd like to know the progress and the process by which the town goes when we are approached for development of any property, and I will be specific to this particular one. To date, we were contacted by the property owner to discuss possibilities and their vision for the property. The town staff met for several months to talk about development criteria and possible benefits, mutual benefits. The property owner submitted a draft concept plan and a draft development agreement on May 24th. Town staff called a planning commission meeting and published an agenda that included this property, and that was publicly produced. The planning commission approved the concept plan, annexation, and rezoning for the council's review. The town council met in executive session to preview the draft, discuss the terms of the development agreement, and to request modifications. This was with the full council. Town council and staff have answered all questions provided to us, spoke with other planners, constituents, leaders, and elected officials for input. We acknowledge there is no perfect agreement. We have received some of what we have requested, and because this property will be tied to a development agreement, there will be two public hearings. Tonight is the first of the two. The second hearing will be at 7:00 PM, Monday night, June 27th, in these chambers. We must balance the request of the rights of the property owner and the needs of the community. We have followed our standard process for review of any requests to develop, yet we must also recognize, the Spratt family has held this property for over 200 years. Historically, you might consider this land the birthplace of the town of Fort Mill. It is a gateway to our community, and it holds access to the Gatapa River. This land will be developed. Our decision is whether or not the town participates in defining the vision and parameters for the development. With that, we will start our public hearing. Each person will be granted three minutes' time. There will be a timer on this TV and on that one. We ask that you be briefed. I've noticed, as I'm looking down the sign-in sheet, that for address, I've got Fort Mill. You'll need to provide your specific address when you come to the podium. And with that, we will ask for Michael O'Brien to approach the podium. Hi, Mr. O'Brien.
Yes, hi, Ms. Mayor. And Town Council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak for a few minutes. I have prepared some comments that I'll hand out, and in these comments, I'm sure many of them you've taken into consideration, and I appreciate the opportunity to go through these with you.
Mr. O'Brien, can I confirm that you're at 372 Sweet Gum Drive?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
First of all, let me state that Mr. Spratt and his entire, and his family have every right and are entitled to sell their land to the best dollar amount that they can achieve. And we, as residents, and mothers and fathers, and business owners, and professionals in the community, certainly look forward to what's going to be developed there and all the time and effort that everyone's putting into it. I specifically wanted to address one item with just a few minutes left. That has to do with just the architectural restrictions that'll be employed in the community. And these are, these are defining restrictions, and as this community, as you had stated, is a gateway to Fort Mill and has been here for so many years. It's not just the entitlement of how many units go per acre, but it's more so what those homes will look like, how it will define the community, what they'll be, is it going to be a community that's where national builders are going to come in and build out, and those national builders are going to, are going to bring in plans where they're going to make the most money? And I know, Mayor, you understand this, being in real estate, and many of us in real estate, we get that. I just wanted to just address that, that the consideration is certainly being placed on the architectural restrictions and the, and the approve board, and that's going to be in place to make sure that, that the homes that are defined, the due diligence period happens now and not when the builders are there making that purchase. Because when they do, they'll go in with the highest dollars, and then they'll have, they'll have all the ability to define specifically what it is that they want to build, as opposed to defining that upfront, so that we can make sure that, that some of our local custom home builders are entitled to be able to build in here as well, and that we're all proud of the community, just like we are with Baxter. And so with that, I, I, there are other items, like I said, that are on here, but I think that's the most important thing that I wanted to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Al, I believe you're next, and I should know your address by heart, but I don't. So if you would state your address when you get to the podium, please, sir.
Al Rogat, 1006 Crest Haven Lane in Fort Mill. And I came here to speak twice, once for general comments, which I do all the time, and separately for the public hearing, which we seem to be in already. So I will start with my general comments, that I still think there should be penalties imposed on contractors who continually break the stormwater ordinances and seem to have no consequences. I still think there should be a town hall meeting twice a year for the public to be informed about what's going on in the town and be allowed to ask questions, which we can't do at these meetings. The town should consider a small percentage for builder-caused road damage, which I mentioned once before. This could be a very, very tiny percentage on permit fees, go into a builder's damage fund, which could help the state fix the roads, or we could fix the roads for the state if we had the money. And I'd like to see ACH payments added to the utility payments, because they charge for credit card payments, and ACH payments are free. Regarding the proposed annexation, as you know, I have been against most of the development that's gone on in this town for the last five or six years, which seems to get approved because development rights, people can do what they want with their property. Well, a lot of that started 20 years ago, when all these property rights were developed into, hey, we can do what we want. This town needs more light industrial than they need houses. If that's what it's zoned now, let's annex it and keep that zoning. We need industry. We don't need houses. We don't need 2,900 homes with all the traffic and all the children that that entails. If half of that were to be age-restricted, not related, I might consider it as useful. But from what I've read, which doesn't mean it's true, the possibility of age-restricted is just that, a possibility, not a limitation. And again, I think we should leave it as light industrial. We don't need more homes in this town and all the traffic and everything else. They just built a bypass, it's two lanes. We don't need 2,900 homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Mike Maynard? Mike, there you go. Hi, Mike.
Mike.
Can you give us your address, please?
Sure, 123 Dogwood Lane.
2023 Dobie?
No, Dogwood Lane.
Dogwood, I'm sorry. I'm getting really old.
Not a problem.
And tonight, I feel it more than ever. Dogwood Lane. Okay, Mike, thank you so much.
Not a problem. All right, good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Mike Maynard. I'm with the Fort Mill Bicycle Company, not Fort Mill, South Carolina. I want to speak with you in regards to the proposed project, excuse me, sorry, involving the Spratt land. Although there are people who are either for or against this project, there are some points that still need to be discussed during the discovery process as well. The concern I wanted to bring to you this evening is the fact that if the project is approved, there should be a strong consideration of including bicycle lanes and paths, paths, excuse me, during the development of the phase, development phase of this land. One of the biggest concerns is the amount of traffic congestion this project will bring. If we are able to implement bicycle lanes and paths during the early development stage, this in turn would have a positive impact on traffic patterns, by giving those who may work close to home an opportunity to ride a bicycle or work to work, or rather than drive. With an elementary and middle school within a short distance from the proposed development, having established bicycle lanes and paths would allow for and encourage more students to ride bicycles to school rather than overwhelm our already taxed school bus system. While this benefits our infrastructure, it also benefits our children's health as well. This would require the town administration to work with our school officials in this area of the project. We could take a chapter from our childhood in doing this, because we rode bicycles to school, some of us did. Due to the proximity of downtown Fort Mill, local businesses would also benefit from bicycle lanes, as people would shop and dine more often, because they wouldn't be deterred by the traffic, and in some cases, the limited ability to find a parking space. Lastly, encouraging healthy lifestyles can be, can have a lifelong-lasting benefit is something our town and its residents can not only benefit from, but be proud of as well. In closing, I ask that you consider this as an opportunity for growth in a positive direction for the town of Fort Mill. While we are experiencing growth and expansion on an exponential level, we can take proactive steps to alleviate some of the growing pains associated with nearby communities such as Riverwalk and Baxter, that have already implemented bicycle lanes and paths. Let us take the lead and use this as an opportunity to improve our community. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments. Robert Woodson, please. Hi, Mr. Woodson. Can I have your address?
Yes, ma'am. It's 136 W. Creek Court in White Grove.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. It's nice to be here. Nice for you to have me. Thank you for letting me talk. I'm a 33-year resident here and graduate of Fort Mill High School. Lived in White Grove for 16 years and a grateful resident of Fort Mill. I come today in opposition to the request to build 2,900 more residents in our town. As an elected official of the town, I feel it is your job to serve the needs and desires of the people of Fort Mill and continue to make Fort Mill a great place to live and to act in good faith. I would think you would agree that's your responsibility. We owe nothing to the developers or influential politicians, but we do to our existing constituents. If you support this, I don't see how we can look at each other in good faith in the eyes and say, this is the best thing for our town. I feel like this proposal is irresponsible. If we look at the traffic impact we have right now in Fort Mill, the average sedan, just in brief research that I've done, is 15 feet long. And if we have one car per 2,900 houses, that equals 8.2 miles of traffic bumper-to-bumper with no space. That's touching. That means that we'd have, it's only 7.6 miles from downtown Fort Mill to Carowinds, and that would be with no space in between the cars. I can't even imagine that. I can't even imagine the traffic that we have right now. We don't have the infrastructure, and we are incapable of building the infrastructure needed to supply 2,900 houses, not to mention the fact that each house traditionally in America has two cars. So we bumped that up to 16.4 miles. It is my understanding that we haven't done a preliminary step of doing a traffic impact analysis, and I don't see how we can go forward in this without at least taking that preliminary step. If I'm wrong on that, I apologize. That's just my understanding. This affects me negatively. My taxes go up, my commute gets longer, my property value stagnates, and my quality of life decreases because of this. And Superintendent Epps said the impact for our schools is $93 million. It is my understanding that we gather $2,500 for each proposed residence from impact fees, which brings our town's total to 7.25 million, which brings us into a negative shortfall of $85 million. I would like to know who's going to pick up that check. I can tell you, I'm getting tired of paying that. Let me say again, I feel this proposal is bad for the town of Fort Mill, and it is bad for me and my family. We have one chance to get this right. And I think once we begin this and we start down this road, that chance is gone forever. I beg you not to be bullied into making a hasty decision that will further decay our quality of life here in Fort Mill, and let's keep this place great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Okay. Once again, we're here to be respectful and to listen to your comments. Everybody deserves the right to be heard, and we are being respectful and taking notes and are listening to your comments. I'd appreciate the same level of respect for the council. Joey, is it Bats, Bates?
Bates.
Bates? Welcome, Joey.
Hello, how are you?
Good. Can I confirm that your address is 102 Brickyard Road?
Confirmed.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are really new to Fort Mill. Moved here because of what this community offers. We're both from small towns north of here, significantly north from my wife. But we come out, we live at the corner of Brickyard and Spratt. We restored at home and sat empty for 15 years. And our main concern, living on Brickyard, is truly the traffic plan for that road. And without knowing what's going on on that road with traffic, what are we doing? Because right now, that's a two-lane road. There's not that many homes on it. We're blessed to be along the land that Mr. Spratt owns and walk and go walk by it every day, and are pretty excited about what you may or may not do with that land. If the town's going to do it versus the county doing it or Rock Hill doing it, then if they're going to increase my water bill next month by 12 percent, then I'd rather you do it. So I'd rather you do it, if that's the case. But the consideration for Brickyard Road that we would ask is the traffic flow there. It's not built to handle the cars that it gets now. It doesn't have any road humps or speed humps. It's two lanes. The buses cut through to get to the school. The trucks cut through to get to U.S. Foods. The people going to the schools cut through. And this is not built for that. People come off of Spratt Street and go fast to beat the curb and come on to Brickyard Road. They're doing 40, 45 miles an hour. Police officers are nice enough to come out and check it every now and then and catch people, but it's just not built for that. So our largest concern is truly the traffic coming in on Brickyard due to this development. The next thing is, we're going to happen to own the property that butts up to the proposed parking lot. And read about the buffer zone. Again, what you read and don't read may or not, may or may not be accurate, but would request that you do that in wooded property to kind of maintain the state of what is there now, so that the residents of Brickyard Road can live there in whatever parking facilities are there. We don't have to be privy to what's going on in the parking lot all hours and days and night, based on what ballgame and what's going on at the Gatapa River. I would like to second the discussion about the bicycles and using bike lanes to get to and from schools. Having come from a small town myself, I think that's a good thing to have. Would also like to have better access to the downtown area from that side of town by being able to ride in bike lanes and take advantage of what Fort Mill has to offer. With that, the next, you know, it's a 20-year plan, so whenever we can see what's going to happen in the phased plan of attack, per se, for the development, that'd be all that we're looking for. Just wanted to say thank you for letting us come here and looking forward to see what happens, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Joey. Chris Bott.
Good evening.
Hi. Can I confirm your address is 105 Bubbling Creek, Fort Mill?
Correct. That's in White Grove.
Thank you.
You can read my bad handwriting. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. The second speaker, Mr. Woodson, echoed many of the sentiments that I'd like to bring to you today, but I'd like to bring maybe just a couple areas. In 2010, Fort Mill had less than 4,500 residents. The proposal that we're talking about this evening increases homes by potential of 2,900 on 700 acres of land. That's nearly five homes per acre. Granted, it may be mixed use, but think of that, five homes per acre. Understand the council may or may not have considered some of these factors. Factors that I'd be thinking about are impact to the roads that were just mentioned. Factors would be cost to the school that Mr. Woodson so eloquently discussed. I'm curious about the shortfall. I don't like paying taxes either. I'm curious about the shortfall. I don't like paying taxes either. But has the council done or considered a feasibility study of the roads? Have you driven in Fort Mill recently at 5:00 p.m.? Or how about going to school and it taking forty-five minutes to drive from White Grove to Nation Ford, or from White Grove to Banks Trail, or from White Grove to Fort Mill High? What about the kids on the roads? This is a twenty-year project. Think about the dump trucks and what that does to the roads, what it does with rocks on the roads, what it does to potential dangers. I've witnessed two helicopters in the Dobies Bridge area over the last two years, landing on, in one case, Dobies Bridge softball field and taking people away. What will this do to the crowding of the roads that was just mentioned, a potential proponent of this? In fact, the lone planning commission vote against recommending annexation and rezoning said even the most conservative estimates are unimaginable, showing miles of traffic, like Mr. Woodson echoed, from this property. So there's a bunch of traffic. We all know that. So I guess when you look at schools, traffic, quality of life, look, everyone has the right to pursue their version of capitalism. And I'm probably one of the biggest capitalists in the room, so I'm certainly not opposed to that. But since when did the needs of the few outweigh the needs of the many? And I guess I would ask, have you talked to your constituents about this? This appears to be fast-tracked from what I read in the paper. It was good to hear a little bit of some of the work that you all have done. I do echo what Mr. Al said, secondly, as the second speaker, with the current land being light commercial zoned. We need more business. We don't need more houses. We don't need more schools. My challenge would be to call a timeout and put the brakes on this. So I think if the council rushes to vote on this in today's meeting or in the very near future, I would consider it reckless and obtuse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Chris. Steve Goudy.
Hi, Steve.
Hi.
Can I confirm that you're at thirteen-sixty-four Kings Bottom Drive?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having all here to bale, voice our concerns. I've been here just over a year. Moved from Northern Virginia, Washington DC area. So I know what traffic is like, and I don't want to see it happen here. One of the reasons that we moved here versus North Carolina, the small-town feel, and I don't want to see that go away. Like many people, the traffic is a main concern for me. It's already not too good at times. It's, sometimes it's not too bad, but rush hour, school times, as other people said. Being from Northern Virginia, I've seen too many times where cities and counties have bowed down to the developer, and it's wrecked the life of the people who live in the community. And I don't want to see that happen here. I'm hoping that you guys will reconsider. I think light industry, as many people have said, is the way to go. I know it's hard because we don't, they own the land, Sprat's own the land, so they can kind of call what they want to do. But maybe they should change it around a little bit, have some light industry in parts of it, and housing in other parts of it. The other thing is, what's going to happen if we have twenty-nine-hundred homes? That's a lot more people. We have to increase the police force, add maybe more schools or trailers to the schools. And the whole infrastructure is just going to change. So I think it really needs to be addressed early before we get too far into it, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Mr. Goudy. Matt McNeely.
Good evening. I'm Matt McNeely. I'm at 1147 Bond Trigger Trail.
Thank you.
I have two comments. The first one's a slight deviation from what you've been hearing, so enjoy it. I come to you tonight to ask for your assistance in dealing with, in my particular neighborhood, a burned house. This house burned over a year ago. It's our understanding through our property management company that there's legal action between the owner and the insurance company. I've driven around Fort Mill. It's not the only burned house that's sitting for, it seems like, every year. I ask you to do anything you can to either amend the law or whatever needs to happen to address this issue. It's unsightly. In my particular neighborhood, the houses are close together. It's a public health hazard. This house has been set vacant for a year. It's getting dangerous, you know, for the residents. Not only that, but also the property value of the people who live around there. It's unfair to them. And our neighborhood's hands are tied, and so we're asking for your assistance.
May I address that, Dennis? We don't normally address anything during public comment because we don't want to take away from your opportunity to stand at the podium and have your full say. This won't take off of your time. We did mention this in a previous council meeting recently, because I have to drive by the one on Dobies Bridge and the one in your neighborhood, and I understand. And our attorney did check on it, and if I'm correct, Mr. Ma-
There's a pending arson investigation by State Farm, I believe, and at this point, it would probably not behoove the city to take any action at this point. The other issue is just the unsightliness of the lot, and I think we've communicated with the attorneys representing the owners, and they promised that they would do something about that, and I don't know if that has taken place.
They did mow the grass and do some cleanup on Dobies. I have not been by the one in your development in the last week, but we are doing what we can, is what I wanted to convey to you. We too recognize the disadvantage that the neighbors are at and that our community's at. So we have kind of run that up the flagpole to see what we could do legally and to get some resolution to that. So we won't let it go, but we have only so much that we can do.
I appreciate that much. Secondly, going back to the issue of rezoning, annexing the land, I would just simply like to remind you all that most of you, when you sought this office, you publicly stated that your main goal was to reduce traffic in Fort Mill. This is a perfect opportunity to step up and, you know, uphold your promise. You know, adding twenty-nine-hundred homes, it's been said. I don't need to, I don't need to repeat it. It's not good for this area. It's too many homes. It's, our town can't support it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dan Evans.
Good evening. Dan Evans, 1035 Roland Park Lane, Fort Mill.
Hi, Dan.
Twelve-year resident. Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm speaking in support of Mr. Sprat's proposal. I think, unlike a lot of what I've heard tonight, I think it does have Fort Mill's best interest at heart. I think the Sprat's family has been great stewards of the property for such a long time, and I think their desire is to do what's best for Fort Mill. I also hear, I'm here representing a group of parents who have children playing sports in town. And I think it's well-known to everybody on the council how bad the need is for fields in this town, especially since we're losing Leroy Springs. And Mr. Sprat has been kind enough to, if his proposal is accepted, to donate approximately fifty acres for fields, over towards 21, if you've seen the map. But I think, one, I applaud Mr. Sprat's generosity in doing that, but I think what I'd like to do is just plant the seed in the council's mind that it could go the next step. I mean, if you look at what Manchester Meadows is to Rock Hill and the amount of economic activity that that property and those tournaments that are held at that facility generate for the town of Rock Hill. It cost thirteen million dollars to build the facility in two thousand and twelve. They had one soccer tournament there in two thousand and fourteen. It raised three million dollars. In two thousand and fourteen, they had tournaments at the BMX facility and Manchester Meadows that generated twenty-one million dollars in economic activity. So you're putting people in hotels, you're putting people in restaurants. My son plays lacrosse. In any given lacrosse tournament, there's a hundred families, a hundred teams at the tournament. Each team has twenty-five kids, twenty to twenty-five kids. That's a family in a hotel room, three meals a day for two or three days. I mean, it's pretty easy to see the type of economic activity that a facility like that could generate. Now, I know there's no plans for building something like that, even on fifty acres. You can only put probably four to six fields, but there's some contiguous land that possibly could be used, and you have the three fields at the Riverview Elementary School that could also be used. So I just wanted to plant that seed. That donation is two things. It's, one, it goes back to Mr. Sprat's, I think, desire for that property to be something that this town can be proud of and be right across the river from what they're developing in Rock Hill, as opposed to having two or three more U.S. Foods right along the river, which could eventually be a tremendous eyesore, I believe, to the town of Fort Mill, as opposed to, I think, a properly developed piece of property that could be the showcase for this town and a revenue generator for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Jim Scott. It's marked through. It has Jim Scott, and then it's marked through. Is Jim here? No. Moving on. Emily Gwin.
Hi, my name's Emily Gwin. I live at 101 Brickyard Road.
I'm sorry, I mispronounced it.
Oh, you're fine.
And you're at 101 Brickyard?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Emily.
There are three generations of Gwins currently in Fort Mill. We've been here a long time, and we are proud to be from Fort Mill. But Brickyard Road is Fort Mill. It's horses. It's the old cemetery with names you can't read. It's land. It's trees. It's beauty. If you put twenty-nine-hundred homes in what all of us consider an old rural country town, can we call it that still? Can we be proud of that still? I'm proud to be from an old country town. I don't, I don't want to live with twenty-nine-hundred homes taking up my roads, taking away from my girls. This town is important to me, and I don't want to see it become something that I want to move away from, which I would if there were twenty-nine-hundred homes crowding in my streets, taking away what are the wonderful schools because twenty-nine-hundred homes with that many kids. Our schools aren't going to be what they are now, and that's something that we are proud of. So I just want you to consider the people that are here, the people that have been here for generations, and take into account what the people who are currently here, who have lived here forever, want and want to maintain our town. Because twenty-nine-hundred homes and what we have now, we cannot support that. Our two-lane roads, which we love because it means we're a small town, we can't do that. It just, it doesn't work. We will no longer be us. So it's our identity that we're talking about when we're talking about changing the zoning on that land. And I don't want to see it happen, and I know most of the people in this room don't want to see it happen either. And I am emotional, but I love my town. So thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Moving on, Will Head.
Yes, I'm Will Head. I live at, currently live at 302 Sprat Street. I've been there for, going on seventeen years now. Prior to that, I was on Leonda Street for four years in that Second White House Inn. And in the twenty-odd years I've been here, the traffic on Sprat Street has gotten out of control. Commute time in the mornings, if I've got to get out, I might as well sit there for thirty minutes with the traffic. I can't back out of my driveway. And the same thing, well, I can get in, obviously, in the evenings, but getting out in the morning or in the evening commute time, it's impossible. So I echo everything else been said about the building, more building in that area and the traffic on Sprat Street, which is very concerning to me. I have grandkids, and you can't leave them out front. Can't. I can't have, let my dog out front without, you know, being very cautious of them, without getting, you know, and of course, you've got to keep them out of the street, but obviously, why? Because the traffic's just, has just gone out of control here. And I would ask the council and the mayor to consider that when you're thinking about adding more to that street. I mean, you can't widen it where I live, right there in Sprat. I mean, your little sign across the street is why I'm here this morning or this evening. This traffic is, I would like not to see more than it is. I'd like to see it decreased, but I don't know how. We'll never do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That ends the number of folks that have signed in to speak this evening. We will close that portion of the public hearing. We will now move into public hearing item number two, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation of York County tax map numbers 02006, 01050. In addition, 012, such parcels containing twenty-three-point-fifteen acres located at or near Canaveral Street and Brickyard Road from R-10 residential and R-15 residential to mixed use. This is in Councilman Shire's ward. We'll open the public hearing. No one has signed in and no one to speak. We will close that public hearing. Public hearing item number three, an ordinance authorizing the entry by the town of Fort Mill into a development agreement with Canaveraland LLC for property located at York County Tax Map Number 66100000270840017, 70840018, lessen, accept a point-nine-eight acre portion of York County Tax Map Number 708. There's got to be a better way to do this. 0000018, describing the deed of the one-third, 0601050, 0200121, 002, and 0200122012. Such parcels containing approximately seven-hundred-fourteen plus or minus acres located at or near Sprat Street, U.S. Highway 21 Business, Brickyard Road, Canaveral Street, and the Fort Mill Parkway, authorizing the execution and delivery of such development agreement and other matters relating thereto. This also is in Ward One, Councilman Shire. No one has signed up to speak to that. Al's raising his hand. If he has signed up and had his three minutes, does he get to go again?
It's up to you, Mayor.
You got something to add, Al?
Well, it's a different public hearing.
You've-
I will be brief.
You will have three minutes, Al.
Well, I won't need three minutes. Just as a point of information, you didn't read the first one.
Thanks, Al.
This information is insufficient for the public to come in here and make comments about, you know, I don't know what the rules are as far as the information the town council or the town is supposed to provide the public before a public hearing. But people have talked about schools. People have talked about site plans. We don't know what this development agreement means. We don't know what's included in it. We don't know what's been proposed. And yet, we're asked to come in here and comment and give our feelings about something we really don't know what it is, except that you've proposed to enter into an agreement that we have no idea what that agreement is. So I don't think it's fair unless you publish enough information prior to the next meeting for people to come into a hearing and be expected to talk about it. So I would hope that that'll get published prior to, either on the website or the newspapers somewhere, so the public can come into the next hearing and know what they want to talk about because they know what is to be developed and what the plans are. And I don't mean the legal terms. I mean the real stuff.
Can I stop you there, Al? Do you not sit on the zoning board? You don't sit on any of-
I'm on Stormwater.
Stormwater? Everyone does have an opportunity to come before the planning commission. It is an open meeting.
I know.
So I just want to make sure that what you're saying is also combined with, the fact is that all that information is provided at the planning commission meeting, in addition to, I don't disagree with you. I don't think there's enough for the public to see. We will work on that.
Yeah, well, I would hope before the next public hearing, we would have enough information to come in and discuss.
I would like to comment if you don't mind me. Mr. Goudy, the first planning commission meeting I attended, I've been with the council since January, was the first time I've seen this map that, you know, not this map, but we've sat here. First planning mission, commission meeting I ever came to since, and it's open to the public.
I know. I've been to them.
Thirty-plus people here.
I've been to them.
I think Mr. Trainer says a record attendance for a planning meeting that night.
Well, I missed that.
So everyone has an opportunity, and Mr. Cronin, I believe, will echo my comments, to come out, and we're not trying to hide.
Oh, I know. I've been to planning commission meetings. I just missed that one.
Three public hearings.
The planning commission, and then two more.
Yeah, the planning commission and then two public hearings. So it's not a rebuttal to what you're asking. I don't disagree with what you're saying about information. I just simply want everyone-
just simply want everyone else to know that it was discussed at length, because I came to the Planning Commission meeting as well.
I just couldn't be there that night.
I understand.
Mayor, just to add some more additional information, all this is on the website, too. Map and...
Can you publicly state what the, how to get to the website?
Sure. Just go to the town's website at fortmillsc.gov.
Did everybody hear that?
You can find all that information.
The town's website, fortmillsc.gov, and you will be able to acquire the information that is being discussed.
Right. And Mr. Moody, I'm just gonna add this just for the public's benefit. I know you talked to me after that Planning Commission meeting, and you said that was probably the most thorough meeting you'd ever been to.
I did.
Detailed.
Nearly three hours.
Yeah. So, again, this is...
There was violence here that night.
Yeah, not a rebuttal or being defensive. We're here to listen to y'all. And, but we do want you to understand, there's been a lot of work, a lot of effort, and a lot of public information gathering up to this point, and it's not something that happens overnight.
And the last thing, although I hope it doesn't come to this, if in fact you approve all these homes, I would hope that the agreement includes at least two schools being built by the developer and more lanes on the roads surrounding the property at the expense of the developer, not the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Still wanted to say light industry.
Al, we've got one, two, three more. Okay. I see a hand back there. I know you're supposed to sign in to speak, but...
Do I need to step up, or can I just speak from here?
I'd like for you to step up, if that's all right. Besides, you might get a breath of cool air. I know it's kind of hot back there in the corner.
And just in defense of what he was saying, my only comment to that was, when was the actual meeting of the Planning Board?
Can somebody tell me that, Joe?
It was the first week of June.
And the only reason I bring that up is because the first time I've heard of this was when I read Mr. Mark's article in the paper, when I saw a 2,900, all of a sudden, 2,900 housing development. So my knowledge of this happened within the last week.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and so, shame on me for not being more involved in my public service, so I'm sorry about that. But I guess my point is...
You're Mr. Woodson, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I remember you from just a few minutes ago.
Yes.
How far in advance of a Planning Commission review do we post the property?
We post a public hearing. Public hearing, we have to post by law. That's 15 days in advance of the public hearing.
So I guess my point is, and I understand your point, too, is that, you know, such a large magnitude of, we're talking, you know, a 50% increase in housing development here, that we need more than a week to think about it.
I understand.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you have any interest in the Planning Commission, we by law must publish the agenda and the timeframes for those meetings, and they are open for you to attend for information purposes. They are on the website. Okay. That was public hearing item number three. Public hearing item number four, a resolution annexing York County tax map number 708, four zeros, zero 21, containing approximately one plus or minus acre at 969 Archie Street. That is also in Ward 1, Mr. Shire's. No public comment. No one has signed in to speak. We close that public hearing. Public hearing item number five, an ordinance annexing York County tax map number 737, four zeros, zero seven three, containing approximately 3.62 plus or minus acres located at 1474 South Carolina Highway 160 East. Yay, Ward 3, number, Mr. Huntley. No additional comments. And with that, we will move to old business. There are no old business items to be covered on tonight's agenda, so we'll move to new business. New business item number one, an ordinance annexing York County tax map numbers. I'm not gonna read all those numbers. Do I have to read them all? Is it a requirement?
I'll go ahead and read them, Mayor. It would be best.
Y'all cross your legs. 661, 0000002, 708, 0000017, 708, 0000018, less and accept a .98 acre portion of York County tax map number 708, 0000018, described in deed of one-third interest to John M. Spratt, recorded in the deed book 1715, page 123, and 661, 0000014, containing in the aggregate approximately 688 plus or minus acres located at or near Spratt Street, U.S. Highway 21 Business, Brickyard Road, and Fort Mill Parkway, Ward 1, Councilman Shire. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion when we move into new business item number one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Do we have some discussion, please? Joe, would you like to talk about this one, or?
Is this where actually...